All right, we're going to call meeting to order Dublin Town Council, August 8th, 2023. Can I have your call?
Nathan, Paul Rick, President.
Rick Snyder, President.
Pam Chaney, President.
Jim Gabb, President.
Bruce Mole, President. Question of the House of Representatives, can be approved, last month's meeting?
I'll make a question, can be approved, last month's meeting?
I have some, there was some corrections on the lines. Um, let's see. This was on the July 25th, 2023, session number 14. When I read this, it was all confusing. I think you need to put the water in there and so on, before testing. On the second line, allow him to reschedule his water testing.
Okay.
Because it was in there about the spray.
That's the side part.
Yeah, so that a clarify. And then the next regular meeting will be held at the fire station, June 13th.
Okay.
But that was all, you did good.
I want to go back and since then, forward.
Yeah, please don't.
I'll second the motion with the corrections.
All right, we have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
For? Motion carried. All right, we'll move on to reports. Police report, I'll go ahead and read this. Animal problems, one. Business checks, three. Civil disputes, three. Community policing, two. Disabled vehicles, one. Escort, one. Head injuries, one. Investigating burglary, residential, one. Investigative vehicle theft, vehicle parts, one. Lost property, one. Man down, one. Motor vehicle, property damage, one. Overdose, one. Speak with an officer, four. Special controls, two. Suicide threat, one. Four traffic stops, one trespassing, two unmarked persons, one vacant house check, one van check, one wanted person, and one buffer checked with a total of 36 calls. Anybody have any questions over there? All right, we'll go over the fire report.
Zero ALS runs, BLS 283. I had nine runs with Reed, fire runs, one with Cambridge City, zero water.
Okay, building report?
We have a two, um, 2177, Cumberland, roof and garage, and, um, 294 North Dublin Street, residential patio.
All right, I'll go ahead and move on to the superintendent with Port Downstate Building.
Paul, did you have a chance?
I did. That letter looked just fine. The only thing I was concerned about was we're taking that address used for him. That is what's the most recent on the tax statements, but even those have been returned to us when we were doing the lawsuit too. So I think we try to send it, do it certified mail, see if it comes back, but as far as the content of the letter is perfect, so. I'm assuming you're having that, because you are asking for the full removal of the building, the hearing is mandatory, you're having that at your work session on the 22nd?
Yes.
And you have your reports. And then, uh, I know there was talk about these speed signs, so I just had, uh, clean just sent this over, um, so you guys could look at that. It doesn't, it doesn't include the post, am I correct in that?
My, is my understanding?
Yeah. So it does not include the post, but, um...
We have the post somewhere?
Well, we haven't read the speed sign post. I'm not sure if that's what they tell. I'm not sure. I'd have to ask.
You can have a mounted on a, a street, uh, a street sign. You'll have like a speed sign. We can mount that, temper and stuff like that.
Okay.
If the, if the, if the, because I've got spams and crap around.
Just have to look at it. Yeah.
I'll see if I can find some of the ones that I was looking at before Cambridge had given me, um, who they got theirs through, so that, for the work session.
All right, there's one in mind. You put my mailbox, too, on those.
Oh, okay.
And I think this one is a lot more expensive than yours, as far as that goes.
Yeah.
Is that for two, though? That's for two?
Uh...
Yeah, so it's like that.
Yeah, it's a 25, isn't it?
So they're not really any more expensive?
No, they're not. I didn't, I didn't catch them right with that. But I'll go on that to look at it along with the other.
Okay.
Anybody else want it?
I want to give two of those for the typed out.
You can have me read it.
Yay! Yeah, that was very nice. I appreciate the effort, effort that it took you to do that.
Well, I just said that all right. I like that, isn't it?
Yeah, it looks very nice. You can read it once if it doesn't. Thanks.
All right, Tom?
Um, you have my regular reports. Uh, we received the invoice from Milestone. So this report here shows our original quote versus, uh, what it ended up costing. It was only a difference of $1,413.10 that, um, I believe the state will owe us, um, for that, if I'm understanding that correctly. Um, that, they do that, so if it comes in less, we owe them. Uh, but since it came in over, uh, what they, the original costs, um, I believe we might get some help with that. Uh, Lenny did have some questions, some concerns on a couple of things, so, um, we are holding this payment until we get that resolved. He can explain that to you.
Well, there's, so, on Johnson Street, there's a, there's a low spot down there, and it's by House, between House and, um, Pickaxe. And that was where the worst spot on that street really was, and that's because that low spot, that water sits in there. Well, that water sits against that curb, so as that water runs in, it's running underneath. As soon as it freezes, it's all going to pop up, and we're going to be back in the same vessel it was in, because they didn't, they didn't bring that out to where it needed to be, so it had no water. So that was one concern. The other concern was that, um, they still have piles of ice foam around in people's grass. So that was the other one. And then the third one was they still won't have a cap on this, um, gas valve on Johnson Street here. They still haven't put that in. They, they lost it, weren't aware of it too.
I, I think it's an old gas line now, or is it?
I don't know, but it's a hole now.
Yeah, it is a hole, yeah. Okay, but you're going to fix that, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. What about, uh, the deal with Endog about the stop off?
They have, they have not gotten back a hold of me. I, that's why I think they were avoiding me, is because I called them like three times on that.
Yeah.
And they keep trying to push it off to somebody else, and the fault lies on them. I mean, they're the ones that ground it up. We couldn't, you know, they should know better.
It's still working, okay?
The light actually is on a, that light's on a timer, so when that, when those wires fail, then the timer takes over and starts doing it. That's why it's still working the way it is, because it's on the timer. Um, but so like, when it's really busy on 40, then that light's not going to change as much because of...
Right.
It's only going to change when the car comes up. So... That's why it's still working, so. And somebody had an issue on, over Dublin Street, where tracks from buggies. Am I remembering that right?
Gary Long after complained about it.
Yeah, did I get it solved?
Tracks.
Buggies.
The horseshoe, I thought it was horse, the horseshoes.
He, he, yeah, he showed pictures of the, the horseshoes and the, the wheels.
Right, I don't know about the milestone folder. I don't know, hope they can fix that or not.
It's just scratched over the top layer of it, so I don't know that there's anything Milestone will do.
Well, it wouldn't hurt to ask.
Yeah, we need to, it might be a key.
You have it because you asked me.
Right.
I mean, all they can say is, goes.
I think, well, it's probably very long after Seminole.
It was, well, and, uh, is.
Close to Delaware.
North London.
So are you going to that Oage on that? Are you going to put it back into the funds so we can start preparing for the next round?
Yes.
I think we need to also, uh, try to find a grant or something, um, for the alleys. Alleys are getting in pretty bad shape. Especially the one that runs right behind Town Hall.
Yeah, and that end.
And then the one that runs behind our house. I think, is that the only two, east and west ones?
I think so.
Okay, that goes almost from end to end.
There's much more, just like, yeah.
My understanding is there are, at this time, there are not grants for the alleys. And of course, we were able to get all of them done at one time, because we had, things didn't cost like they do now.
Right.
Um, not too long after I started. But, um, I will continue to look and see. Um, that is something, because we've kind of put a lot of the, the excess that we didn't use back, um, to try and put towards the sidewalks.
I think sidewalks are important.
We'll continue to work on that one. I had my meeting with, um, Wayne Hudson for the Department of Local Government Finance, which is who we do our budget through. Everything was fine as is. We did not have to, um, cut anything. I took $1 out of the CCI simply because the budget number was 666, so we made it 667. Um, other than that, nothing, nothing else changed. He caught that and he goes, "You see that?" And I said, "Yeah, I do. Can we change it?" He says, "Yes, please." So we got that taken care of. Other than that, there was no changes. Everything looked good. Um, so we will move forward. Our public hearing will be at our regular meeting, uh, September 12th at 7 o'clock here. Our adoption meeting will be October 10th, 7 o'clock here, at the North Fire Station. And, with all my regular reports, I think that's it. Um, and the other thing is, we had discussed at the work session, the, um, copier, replacing the copier. And I was able, um, I will put a thank you again out to, um, Andy from Toshiba and South Henry School Systems, because they allowed me to come over, uh, to their corporate offices and play with their copier. Um, it's, I think it's going to be a lot simpler than what we had currently. Uh, doesn't have all the options that I don't need on there, which, you know, that kind of made things confusing too. So, um, we have the two. Uh, the lease is $73.67, um, a month, or, which comes to like $4,400. Um, my recommendation would be to purchase it outright, which would be $3,393.04. And, um, the maintenance agreement, uh, still is for the 60 months, so the warranty is covered for that, that period. Um, the price per copy goes up a little bit, but, uh, I put in just an average of 500 copies, and for 500 copies, it only went up $25. So it's still, I think buying it outright is still cheaper than, um, going with the lease.
Well, that base fee, because I can't see a base fee on this contract. Or you just calculate that on that three and a half cents per page under color, and three tenths and a half per page for black and white? Because I don't see a base fee on there.
On the, on the lease?
On the, on the maintenance contract.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's 73.67 plus those.
Actually, this says zero minimum payment.
None come included in that 73.67, so the price of the paint, the paper ink, all that would be in the 0.003.
Okay, not paper. They said they did not supply paper. You supply your own paper.
Right, that's, that's.
They would supply ink, the, on toner parts later.
Basically, it goes by how many pages I print?
Right, yeah, I, yes, I understand.
So it would be 0.0034 color, or black and white, how is it 0.030?
0.035, three and a half cents.
Yeah, that's on top of the 73.67.
Well, I'm just saying 73.65 I never see in their contract.
The lease with the maintenance agreement, it's on the first page.
Oh, yeah, I know, but if you don't lease it, then buy it.
Then it's on the second page, uh, which says, "Aim's Maintenance Contract."
Right.
And that said, shows, again, nothing is included. It's, you're paying for those individual costs, 0.0035 and 0.035.
Right, and so therefore, when you quote that 73, if you go to the sales out, so it is out, that won't apply.
Well, the, the, the cost of those is not included in either one of these prices. That's extra. That's where I was saying, if I, if I print 500 copies in one, it's going to cost me $175, a dollar seventy-five, and the other one, it's going to cost me a dollar fifty. So it's $2.50.
You calculated that, dating that time as this per page.
Yes, yes, as an example. Because we, we are never, uh, I've gone back through, um, our contract with Xerox, and I never hit the 2,000 mark on the black and white. It's usually between, um, 1,000 and 1,800. And the color, uh, is usually no more than five, and it very seldom hits 500.
When you print your card for billing, is the card already?
Cards are already colored.
Okay.
That's stock.
Yeah, I can remember.
Okay, let me see if I've got my head wrapped around this. So we're, we, you're wanting to purchase it for $3,043, and then there will be a, a monthly fee on top of that for the maintenance and the...
Based on how many copies we do, yes.
And then if you lease it, this is $69.99, but you said that the real price is 73.67.
It's 73.69, please what, the final.
And with that, you also have to purchase?
Yes.
And if you notice, if you do buy it, it has six different documents that you would want to be solving, the sales order, that maintenance contract, the schedule sheet, the delivery and acceptance certificate, the, um, uh, the setup, basically, agreement, and then the automatic where it reads how many you do, so they don't have to come over here, so.
Yes, and I have to do that either way, whether it's lease or placement or whatever.
Right, and they, they've made all these for Bruce's signature, so if they want to prove it, I still would catch his signature denial.
And if we lease it, they want us to have insurance, which any copyright we have is included in our insurance, but they want it insured at a value of $26,788. But if we, um, purchase it, then it would be the purchase price of it, or the replacement price.
And do that, and buy credit. If fuel charges go up a little 10% or something, they can do a additional fuel charge on that maintenance contract.
So how much is the maintenance contract about?
That's based on the number of pages, so...
And she was saying that if they average 500, it would be that $73, is that right?
Yeah.
And then that would be the same for the lease. You'd have to have the $72 on top of the lease.
So say I do 1,500 copies a month, um, that would be $4.50 a month. And if I do 500 copies, oh, oh, wait a minute, I got to do, that would be 1,750 if we purchased it outright. Times 0.35, 0.03. I can't. Would be, black and white would be $5, sold, 25 cents, 1,750. So approximately $23 to $25 a month would be that cost, if I stay within what my normal average is, 1,500 black and white, and within 500 for color.
You say 1,500 or below, or?
Approximately 15. See, when I had my, my old maintenance agreement, they gave me 10, 2,000, as long as I stayed under 2,000, and I was always way under 2,000.
How many copy machines do we have in the office?
I'm sorry?
How many copy machines do we have in the office?
We have one copy machine, and then we have two printers.
Okay.
Mine prints and faxes.
Okay.
With this one, um, there is a way to do it to the cloud, so that I can print off of that. If my printer is not working, I can fax off of that.
Okay.
As well, because there's been times when I've had to go down to Cambridge and fax something, because my fax machine wasn't working. That was before we got the, the new one.
Okay.
What do you see as a benefit of purchase over lease?
It's cheaper. My maintenance, the, the length of the maintenance is still five years. And, I mean, the cost of the material and everything is the same, because that's included in that, so, um, there's not that big of a difference in the price from 0.0 cents to 3.5 cents is the difference on the black and white.
So if there's some, if, when you're talking about maintenance, that would include the warranty or any kind of repairs that is needed?
Yeah, that includes that, the toner, the waste, um, the waste container, all of that stuff. And then if I have issues, they come and take care of it. That's all included in that. Yes, yeah, because that's where I'm at now, because, um, the copier I have now, when the maintenance agreement went out, one, I just have to hope that, uh, because there's some parts that I can't get anymore. Um, but, uh, the toner is like 400 and some dollars every time I need toner. And then there's four different colors of toner, so.
And that's included in the price?
Yes, that's included.
Whether it's purchase or lease?
Yes.
So where would the funds come from?
Um, if it's purchased, um, edit would be 2,000, um, CCD would be just under 800, and a CCI would be 600. Under, um, town equipment is usually what that is under. And just for the record, and the board already had this, um, but we did quote through Xerox, which is who my existing, um, copier is through, and their price was 4,130 and 5,161 were the two that they quoted that were similar to what I had. Um, but mine was a demo when we got it, so it had a lot of things on it that we didn't need, but it was still a good purchase at that point in time. So there's stuff on it that we didn't need quoted on us, because we didn't use it.
All right, I hope there's not any more discussions. Does anybody have anything else?
No.
I'm moved that we purchased the Toshiba, uh, purchase price 3,043.04, and the maintenance agreement that goes along with that.
How much did you say, 3,000?
It'd be 3,343.
Oh, it's on here. This, it says 3,043.04.
Okay, look at this one.
Do I have that one?
Should be your last pile. This is the final paperwork that I just got today.
All right.
So that's why you guys didn't have, this is updated, because we actually get, um, a municipal discount as well. So the discount changed, I think is the difference between what he originally gave us and what finally, our final quote was.
So it went up because we're municipal?
It went down.
It went up. This one says 3,043. This one says 303.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
3,043.9.
Okay. But that's what, I mean, that's what the existing, this is the final, what it is at this time.
I'll go ahead and make that motion, but what I would like to see you do is to go back and try to present his quote to him.
Uh-huh.
And ask him to reduce the price to that.
Okay.
And then if he doesn't, then we can go ahead and move forward, but I think that they should honor what they told you.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
For? Mr. Carey?
That's all I have.
All right, we'll move on to old business, uh, non-albany interruffle agreement.
I don't know what that is.
Um, that was the interruffle agreement for, um, us doing spraying, non-albany, the weeds. I gave you that, essentially, uh...
I guess I didn't see the, uh, I saw the, I'm changing that, but somebody, you know, some, I'm not aware of that.
Okay. I did a FEMA form, basically, as far as charging what our, um, labor costs would be, and then the, just the actual cost of the spray. And then, um, did they have a problem with those numbers?
No, no.
Um, they sent that to the, he, he gave that to them for their board, so basically they were okay with it.
They're, they're having their meeting tonight.
So, but we don't have an actual agreement.
Where did you send that?
Uh, I don't know, I'll have to go back and look. I can't get in my computer, I'm not attached to.
I'm sorry, I, I wasn't aware. How much did we charge him?
I'm sorry?
Hourly wasn't it, or?
Yeah, it's an hourly price.
Yeah, it was an hourly price on our, on our wages plus, I think the, the cost was, was fifty-one dollars a gallon is what our cost, fifty-two, fifty-two dollars a gallon. Let me see if I have that in here, I think I do, I think it's laying on my desk.
You can approve the concept and just accept it to be, making sure it's correctly believed, you just use, um, contract.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, we'll get this process moved a little before the minutes.
Yeah, I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Page, Mr. Carey.
My second.
New business, cemetery donation of Jackie Smith.
Uh, we received a hundred dollar donation from, uh, Jackie Smith just to be used towards the cemetery, nothing specific, um, just to be put towards maintaining the cemetery. So we just need to approve that.
I'll make a motion, we approved the hundred dollar donation from Jackie Smith, would thanks.
My second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey Julie, if we could get some, um, thank you cards for things like that, and then at our workshop meeting, pass it around for the board to sign this and that.
Okay.
All right, mid-year transfer, R four dash twenty-three.
Uh, that is just transfers between appropriations. You, you have that one, I, yeah. We usually end up having to do one mid-year and one at the end of the year.
And then the ordinary. I'll make a motion, approve transfer R four two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Page, Mr. Carey.
Um, well, if we have, so we had the refuge, I had a cash reserve and I had the regular operating. What we pay Big B is out of operating, can I just, do I have to have a resolution or anything to take that out of the cash reserve and put that so it's all together in one fund?
No.
Okay, just, everybody's blessing to be able to just combine that into one since we don't use that anymore.
Blessing.
Okay, thank you.
What is that really?
Um, that goes to the, um, state that we are closing out the community crossing match and grant once we pay milestone. So, um, that's just saying everything is done, everything is within, um, their requirements, and, um, it shows the same thing as that form that we did, what, what the original quote was, what the, what the final was, and what the difference is. Yeah, so it's just, you're just signing saying, we're done, everything's going, we're closing out and.
So we need to wait until we get done or?
Yes, I mean, he, he can sign it, but it's not going anywhere until we get this approved cause I can't send that until we pay milestone.
Okay.
And I'm not paying milestone until we get that resolved.
So what about road markings? Do, do the, like on, um, North Johnson Street, just, is that not marked, even, never has been? Or where stop signs are at, they don't even have that?
No, we never, you know, made the markings on the street like State does, no. We never had the equipment or anything to do with that, so.
Okay, what is the note down here with the Lewis Golda Cemetery?
Yes, um, thank you. I had a gentleman come in, um, at the, he had a, a request at the cemetery. Once he passes, uh, his son, uh, is able to get, uh, it's heavy-duty PVC that has, um, threaded seal and it would be sealed and threaded. Him and his wife, his wife is already deceased, she's cremated, he's gonna be cremated. They want to put both of their ashes combined together in that and then just put it down. Um, I did check with, um, Chris Earlywine simply to make sure what state law is, and that is, okay, they've done things like that before at our cemetery and others, um, in the past. So that is something that is allowed, but I still wanted to get your blessing, um, that you did.
As long as it's not, that's the one, I don't have any problem.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make notes in the book, you know, that together.
Right.
I mean, you already buried hers, don't you? Yeah, I should.
Yes.
So all the question was because they're joined, is that the?
And it's a handmade urn, but, um, it is sealed and threaded. It's threaded and it has a seal around it to put it in place.
Does your code require certain kinds of logos in it or?
I don't, I don't think so, and Chris said they've done things similar to that for, um, people way back when in the past. I'll make sure that we note that in the book.
Yeah.
Cause we, I, I told him we would have to know where they put it so that we, we know when we're.
You know, uh, it's not how it's built.
We would have to do.
It's for, you know, west side graves where I wouldn't mark it.
Would you, when did, uh, Lenny go back to work, uh, off of like duty?
Yeah, we got this one on court last night. Yeah, four, three, one.
Two, one, one, four.
Two, one, one, four. Back, point nine. So, twelve, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Is one in that? Lenny had an appointment. On that date, but. Oh, that's it.
That's not it.
I think it's the eighteen.
I just wondered if the hours was going to drop back down for.
It was the eighteen.
So I just wondered if the hours was going to drop back down for.
Say that again?
I wondered if the hours was going to drop back down for the temporary.
Yeah, I mean, when, when he's already working, I mean, we're, we're getting stuff done, so.
Well, but that's not, that's not part-time. Forty hours a week is not part-time, and I can understand that it was, um, there was a need there. But if you're back to work full, uh, at full capabilities, then it, it needs to work as reduced hours.
Twenty hours, if I was supposed to, but I can't reach it.
Mowing season is gonna be slacking off here too, so, uh, we, we, I don't wanna be paying, um, a temporary work for full time hours, so, yeah, when there's, you know, when it can get done otherwise.
All right, move on to claims.
I do got a question, and maybe it might not end as well, but I'm curious about the fifth line down on vendor four thirty-seven. Is everything in the, up and the up there?
Where in that, one, two, three, four, five? It's permission, yes.
And no value, one point there?
No, no.
What goes down?
Good one, uh.
It's a thunder?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, approve the claim, I'm presenting it.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second for claims, all in favor?
Aye.
And just, just for the record, we, we've had inquiries in the past.
Financial.
Anything out of the ordinary, boss?
No.
I make, go ahead. I'll make a motion, approve the financial report.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion, adjourn the meeting.
I have a, one more thing. That event that was in the park was wonderful, um, it took the grand kids and it, I wish there was more people that would have, um, come along to enjoy that, but it was a great event and I think that's something that can be though on. Uh, there was one area there, you remember those, I don't know what they're called, those bouncy animal things used to be? It's got a metal plate there, you need to try to get that out. Uh, the, the ends are kinda crooked, I think it could be harmful. So if you can figure out a way to get it out there.
We actually saw a school had another park, uh, and I worry that we could put it back there. But, yeah.
And, and if, um, before winter, if the tables sealed over there, those, remember those cement nicked tables? The, the paint that's on there is kinda, it kinda brought the set on. So if we could get those knocked down, uh, probably, don't know that we have to paint them again, but cement.
Paint on the cement tables?
Somebody did, it's got great paint on it now.
They had a gray cover.
We had to cover them up. We got, we, yeah, so we painted them years ago.
Yeah, so, but anyway, it just needs a little tender holding care and either, um.
Is that the same color on the building?
Pretty much, it was, it's a gray color.
Yeah, it's a gray.
No buildings touched up too, it definitely isn't the same color.
I, I can't remember, I can't remember the depth of it.
But to preserve this, the, uh, concrete, then probably need to seal it, or paint it, whatever.
What did they ever do about, you talked to them one time about the, uh, new fellow for around the, around all the, the.
Playground.
Playground equipment?
That's part of the help grant that we're working on.
What did they decide to use, or did we ever decide to use?
Well, the quote we got was for the corner place.
Yeah.
For what?
It's called four in place match.
Like a permanent?
It's like a permanent, like a rubber.
The rubbery, the little black rubber pieces?
Well, it's a solid, it's a solid piece that just.
It's a solid piece?
Force across.
Kinda like on those rubber basketball floors.
Yeah. How did we decide, if we use that board that we have, we talked about possibly cutting it in half to make two signs, how are we, I have forgotten what we're doing. Am I getting it wrapped, am I seeing about what somebody can paint on it, or what?
I'm sure we never fully decided really.
You know, by using the bolts, and will I wrap it across and through or being hand painted?
Wrapped and hand painted, cause I know you talked about, um, having, having wood come out. So I'm, I'm not sure where to that.
I mean, obviously the vinyl stick on letters are the cheapest thing, but it may not be the most appropriate thing.
Yeah. Well, I think the, um, yeah, I think the wrap is kinda like, what was on that? It's just one piece that goes around it, but, um, I will get quotes on that, I, I just needed to clarify. The gentleman that did the mural, was that, I, is this something that you would consider for him? Is this something that I need to check?
Yeah, but we just need to have an idea of what we want it to look like to have a better pricing idea.
Okay.
Cause I mean, he goes into very, very detail, so it just depends if you just want like block letters or do you actually want like pictures of kids with hair and eyeballs and that kinda stuff, so, yeah. I mean, he goes into very detail, but.
He did an awesome job.
So it just depends on how, I guess, how we want it to look, if we maybe get somebody to stencil or just draw out a rough sketch, that might give some better, better ideas.
Well, some of those things that Sherwood put together would, yeah.
Be some vision.
Okay, all turned put, all that together, you see that?
Yes, if we come up with something we like, we can go from there.
Okay. I'm done.
The good thing about what he does though, he puts a graffiti guard over the top of it, so it's just nearly a painting roof. So even if they spray paint it or whatever, he can wipe it off.
Does he have to have a certain material to paint on?
Basically that board, I mean, he'll do it on the buildings too, but, like he did Legion, he did the, uh, pump and the Cambridge, not all concrete block buildings. But we just was thinking about this, whether we can do a free standing sign or if we hang it on the building down there with the vinyl siding, that'd be some board of some type.
I was figuring, I've been thinking that if we do put one on the backside of the concession stand and then put one at the other end coming in from now, so we're hitting. Cause I don't know, from Milton, from the Milton side, I really don't know where you'd put something that big because this over here, kids will, it'll be run, and then you got all the cars and everything here and they should put it way, way up on the top of the hall.
Probably have to put it on the other side, and I know that it's a big.
Yeah, but I mean, that one could actually be put on the, the backside of the concession stand as you're driving around and have one there.
Cut in half and weigh like two foot by four foot, it would be four by eight. Now, maybe you could put some, offside part.
Cut it, cut it in half, it'd be four by four.
It'd be four by four.
Yeah, well, you should cut down the lengthways. You're four by eight, you cut around, you know.
It just cuts it in half, you got.
Well, I'm cutting it halfway long ways. You have two by eight foot long.
No.
Two foot wide.
No.
I think you got a V over X.
I think it's a big.
Well, I think you could get a, you could have a better mural on half four by four than you could the two by eight.
Okay.
It's just not there yet, but.
Already got a motion to adjourn, you guys got anything else?
Probably not.
Okay.
My second. My second.